Well, good afternoon, everyone. It is now four o'clock and I'm calling the Yelm Fighting Commission meeting to order. Staff, would you please do a roll call?
Commissioner Carlos Perez.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Howard.
Here.
Commissioner John Graver.
Here.
Commissioner Richard Lumsdale is excused. Commissioner Ann Warman.
Here.
Commissioner David Johnston.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Austin Walker.
Here.
Very well, would you please stand for the point of the meetings?
One of the reasons for one day for the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every single justice.
I don't know who you are. Very well, has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes from last week?
Yeah, I have.
Well, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minute from the last meeting.
I second.
Well, motion is uh seconded. All those in favor to approve the minutes say yay.
Yay.
Disposed. Very none. The minutes are approved. Agenda item number five. Staff, are there any communications?
Uh, we don't have any department updates.
Agenda item number six. Is there anyone in the audience? Apparently we have no audience, or is there any audience on the video?
Oh, you're family.
Yeah. I'm supposed to cater this thing, I think.
Uh, again, if there are, if there are any, then the comments should be looted to three minutes. And also, we ask that you come forward and state your name and address for the record. There are none? Well, agenda item number seven. Is there any unfinished business staff that we need to pursue?
None.
None it is. This is going to be a fast meeting. Agenda item number eight, new business. Is there any new business?
Yes, so we, we spoke last meeting about the updates um to the commercial, um, commercial districts, all three, the industrial zone and the central business district, um, to provide some more flexibility in the residential units, um, mixed-use development, um, parking requirements. There's a, a whole list of them. And uh, it was handed out last week on all of the updates. Um, and wanted to give a, a week or a month to review those um and bring back any uh feedback. And then uh from the, kind of the timeline going forward would be next month, take it to a public hearing. Um, I know there was a, a few absences last month, um, but I'm happy to run through them uh relatively quickly and.
Either that or could you give us a copy of the handouts that you had last week?
Uh, I can, um.
But would be easier.
I could email, I have it up on the screen here.
Oh.
Um, but also I can print it. It would just take a few minutes to get it printed. Um, but if we wanted to email it, and I could email it as well after this meeting.
That'd be fine.
Yeah. Um, so yeah, there was a couple uh minor changes that I did make. Um, so we looked at adding uh drive-through requirements for stacking uh to pro- to provide uh a clear definition of how many is enough. Uh, at this point, we don't have that. So, um, with the, the new development coming in, uh, you know, it caused us to think about that. So page thirty-five. I just had it. Okay. Alright, so adding uh eighteen dot five four dot eight zero, drive-through standards. Uh, these standards are ensure that there are adequate onsite maneuvering in circulation areas. Uh, ensure that stacking vehicles do not impede traffic on a budding streets. Uh, the design of drive-through facilities shall provide safe and efficient pedestrian and vehicular access through site. Stacking lane shall not interfere with parking spaces, parking aisles, loading spaces, internal site circulation, or points of ingress egress for vehicles or pedestrians, and shall not stack into any right-of-way. Uh, stacking queue shall not spill onto adjacent streets. Each stacking space shall be a minimum of twenty feet long and ten feet wide on straight segments, and a minimum of twelve feet wide on curved uh segments.
What is stacking?
Stacking is basically a queue of cars that are waiting to order. Uh, stacking lanes do not need to be linear, so they could be uh similar to a McDonald's where there's two ordering windows. You could have two and then they go and converge into one. And so service window shall be included as a stacking space. And below are the, oh, come on, there we go. Uh, the type, so fast food restaurant, financial institution pharmacy, and automatic car wash. Discussing with our uh civil engineer and as well as looking at many other cities, uh, this is what we've come to that feels most uh adequate for Yelm. Uh, but again, this is a, this is a draft and we're looking for input. So uh if you do have input on any of these numbers.
Does that affect the new team's routing of their traffic for?
Uh, any current project, it will not affect.
Because they've already got.
They're already vested.
Yeah, okay.
And this is just to prevent huge lines?
This is from preventing the lines to interfere with uh adjacent streets.
Uh, we having problems with that now?
I, I would say yes. Uh, and not having any standard is the, is the main issue. Because you can have a, a development come in and say you want to drive-through. We can argue and say we think four is going to be needed, but we have nothing to back that up.
I'll give you an example, David. There's that uh daycare center right there on First Avenue. And just before uh the tire place. The tire place.
By uh Les Schwab.
Swabs. And the traffic backs up when they're trying to pick up their kids there. And that's a, that's a stacking.
Right, right.
There. I don't know that it can be done about it now, but.
Yeah, and that's a good, that's a good point. We don't have daycare listed. Um, so that might be, if it's not in this round, um.
They don't really have a window per se where they pass the kids out. So you may have to be able to say that it's not strictly, um, you know, a drive-through kind of uh.
Yeah, yeah, that would be interesting because it is a pickup. Believe me, I know it's right next door to me.
That's right.
It blocks me from getting in sometimes. It's like, yeah. Um, but yeah, that would be an interesting thing where. How would you, what would you term it as? You know, a pickup, stacking for pickup or?
We can, we can take a look at that and um send it out and provide it during that public hearing if that, if that's something the team wants to um look at in this round. It's definitely a good thing to look at, whether it's in this code update or, you know, shortly following on the next one. Um, but that is a great point and, and daycare facility over there and, and causing, and that's what we're trying to prevent with coffee stands and fast food. Uh, daycare would also be a good one to, to look at.
The other, if I can interject, the other occurrences are uh middle school, young middle school and the pickup times there, as well as the um uh UCBO on Thursdays for um when they have the food uh bank. Um, I don't know if that's something that we want to um regulate the same way. No, we don't want to discourage it.
No.
Well, it sounds like there wouldn't be any retroactive enforcement, so this would only be for projects going forward.
That is correct, yeah. I do kind of development.
Yeah.
A lot of food bank. It's just kind of a.
It's, it's grown and grown and grown because there's so many more people that are in need of, of. Um, I don't know if you've seen the length of that queue.
It went almost all the way down to Yelm Ave.
About Yelm Ave.
Really?
And that's a, that's a part of a, a larger discussion. Um, I don't think that's something we could take care of in chapter eighteen right now. Um, but it is something that, you know, is, it does need, it warrants being looked at. But yeah, in terms of, you know, this, I don't, I don't know that we can do anything about. Because that would change, that would be more of a regulatory change versus the development guideline.
I agree with what she was saying, that if, if we're giving food out, then maybe we should give them a pass if possible. Um, because it's a lot of cars. I don't think we'd be able to actually regulate it.
And it only happens once a week.
Once a week.
Week.
Yeah.
It's once a week for part of the day on Thursday, but in order to get in line, people are getting there earlier and they're where sexed up all the way up.
Yeah, I've seen cars start to line up, you know, it's early, it's like ten o'clock in the morning, I mean.
Yeah, and they couldn't, they wouldn't have enough land in the city to provide the drive-through requirement that they need. Um, for the mo- for the majority, I think this, you know, catches, this will catch the, you know, the most fish, uh, so to speak. So, um, we're pretty excited about that to have some kind of backing in, in the development uh side of things where it can prevent, you know, future issues. Uh, so that's on stacking. Um, the next one that I had were um, it was mentioned the doors fronting Yelm Avenue. Um, so I will just go to you. So page four, um, and this is within the CBD. If uh, in, the language might change from, from now until the public hearing, but the intent will be the same on number nine there. Uh, if a building fronts Yelm Avenue, the building must provide an entrance that fronts Yelm Avenue. Uh, that way we're not getting the backs of buildings right in our commercial bus- uh, our central business district. Um, because we want storefronts and we want it to be walkable. That's the whole point of the CBD is, you know, providing that pedestrian access. Um, and there are a couple of buildings that uh that do not have that. And if we had that in, um, would be a little bit more inviting uh to pedestrian.
One of the things that um it's worth contemplating is that until this has been added in, it was intentionally not to have the entrance on Yelm Avenue, but to have it just off of Yelm Avenue, so that you actually enter the building from the, the side or just the, the side road that it's on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, rather, at least that was the thought, so that you're not, um, how would you say it? You're, you're allowing people to see, hopefully there's some landscaping, and I'm seeing that they're actually getting some landscaping in the in that small area between the sidewalk and the new building out there. Um, but the uh first one that was done that way was the um, uh, the physical therapy building. And um, and as I recall, Anton, you might recall this better than I do. There, there was an intentional move of the entrance to the parking area that was to the side or to the back. So they have the park to be able to get people in and out off of the main street. So that, it's just something that we probably would want to discuss on this. There may be some other feedback that comes back at the open house on this one.
Yeah, during public comment period. Um, yeah, and we're not saying like put a, we don't want your parking lot to be in front. Like it could be, so if we take um, you know, the new building now, so they have parking on the side, they have an entrance on the side, but to also have an access point from Yelm Avenue via the sidewalk. Um, I mean, you have like LA Jewelry, you have um that whole strip there, Bob's Photography Studio. Um, and it kind of provides a nice storefront um where there's parking in the back.
As you say though, and complements what this is doing.
Mm-hmm.
This is forcing the entrance from, from the main drive, main drag.
Yeah, removing it from the main drag. So there's, there was some reason
Yeah.
that, that was in there before that we actually, um, at least over the years, it's just one thing that I recall that we actually uh voted to, to put the entrance off of the main drag, off of Yelm Avenue, uh, just off, so that, um, I don't know if it had to do with cost or it had to do with uh being able to have more walkability uh on the, the sidewalks themselves.
Can we go back and review the minutes and see what the thought process was? When?
When, which year? Some time since two thousand nine. That's not that long. It's a long time.
That would be a deep sea fishing.
Was, um.
Well, the, the biggest thing was, you know, how I guess it pretty much started was the vision.
Right.
And then um our thoughts when we were doing vision was keeping the cars out of the front.
Yeah.
That was the big thing. We wanted the building to be towards the, the front, but it to be inviting and to be good-looking, landscaping, so that the area along the road was not only pleasing to the eye, but also was walkable. You know, and made it look, look good. Um, I do remember, but boy, it's
Yeah.
you know, about moving it off, you know, as long as the front still made it feel inviting. You know, um, didn't necessarily mean had to have the door there, but you know, um, that, that it looked inviting, you know, that type of thing.
The, the other aspect was to be able to have the ADA requirements met. And most people, there were uh concerns about having to do ADA in both of uh, front entrance on Yelm Avenue and also an entrance off of the um where we're asking to put the parking lot in the back. And I think it was a compromise to say, you know, put the entrance off of the, as close as off the side, so that you can have that. So you, because you have to conform to the ADA requirements for people to be able to enter. And I, I wish I could remember all the details. But that's, it's been too long. But there was an, there was an intent behind not doing this because of the, um, there was a conflicting requirement uh there.
Okay.
I mean, as it stands, do we have any current requirements for having at least one ADA entrance on the building?
Uh, I think that's state, yeah, state standard. Uh, yeah. Yeah, everything has to be ADA compatible, um.
All entrances or just?
I don't think all interest, but I think at least one entrance, yeah.
Would it be worth considering amending that the, the entrance fronting Yelm Avenue be ADA accessible?
It might not be really the best one.
Yeah, it might not be the best.
Coming from car. Yeah.
Yeah, it's something to consider. And again, I'll email this out and if, if there are um additional comments, um, yeah, we're happy to kind of talk with you and, and work, work this out. It's very, I mean, at this stage, it's getting closer to a final draft, but it's still a rough draft. Uh, and again, we, we want both. We want um there to be parking. We want there to be, you know, we want it to be inviting and, and look inviting um as you're coming through town and it's just, you know, we're trying.
No, I, I'm all for it. I'm trying to figure out why, you know, what was our rationale?
Rational.
Yeah, there wasn't any language removed here. It just didn't say um that a, that an entrance had to be on Yelm Avenue. Um, because there's zero setbacks in the CBD. So in theory, you could put the back of a building right up to the right-of-way line um within the CBD right now. So.
But are, are we allowing for that to be the back of the building? See, I think it comes down to, you know, we, we wanted the front of the building to be on, you know, so the idea is that we're hoping they're not taking the building, go, okay, forget that, we're just doing this, you know?
Yeah.
So there's no windows, no?
No, yeah, anything, yeah.
But then, the intent was to have it closer to the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
And not have, have the parking lot in front.
Right.
That was, and then the ADA.
So definitely something to keep, keep looking at and um again, we'll have a public, public period at the next meeting, um, August. In August. Um, and the notice of public hearing and everything will go out for that. Um, and then the, so the last one uh that we're looking at is parking lot maintenance. Uh, this is again, this is still in, in rough draft mode. So we're working with our attorney to see what we can and cannot require in, in the best process for this. Um, we'll have a final solution to L. I have it highlighted just because it's very much in its infancy. Um, but looking to prevent situations where there is an absolute public nuisance in a parking lot with a pothole or um whatever the, if it's just not being maintained and that, that performance isn't being done, um, to have the authority to have it, we'll have a process um that would allow us to go in and fix it at the owner's expense. And there has to be um the proper procedure for appeal, uh, resolution and fixing the problem. And then worst case scenario, we go in and fix it. Um, but that, you know, then it, it involves counsel, uh, because a nuisance would have to be declared by the city council. So there's still a lot of steps that would need to be taken, but for us to kind of have a blueprint on and have ground to stand on when we're asking property owners to please maintain your parking lot. Um, because we're getting, when there was a, an issue over in the um like by Burger King and, and Ghost Dog Tattoo, that area. When that area became pretty, when it became bad, we would get phone calls weekly about people running into it and damaging their car and uh, you know, is there anything the city can do about it? And it wasn't. So we're trying to uh implement a procedure to, to allow us to, to take steps for that.
So would this apply to the entire CBD or all commercial parking?
That would be all off-street parking everywhere in the city.
Commercial? Residential as well?
I, well, that, it wouldn't really apply in residential. Um, it's just off-street parking facilities.
Okay.
So it's definitely gonna, it's more geared towards commercial. Um, just because there's no big commercial parking lot in residential. Uh, but this is under the, the parking, the off-street parking chapter.
If it's a large apartment complex that suddenly has a lake in the middle of the parking area or something like that, then this could apply?
Then this would apply, yes.
So?
Yes, in that case, yes.
What doesn't need some off-street park?
Uh, an off-street park, so if you have a multi-unit parking, or a multi-unit family um complex or apartment complex, and you have, uh, so I'll just throw out a number of sixteen units. Um, they're gonna have a specific number of off-street parking required. Um, they're gonna require so many spaces. There's a ratio of so many car spaces per unit.
Where is designated on a plan map or like where, where, how do we know that a certain area is off-street park?
Uh, I can show you an example. It's basically, it's, it's their parking lot.
Private property.
Which, right, so yeah, I was trying to figure out the difference between it being commercial or, or.
Or residential.
Right.
The places you're saying true that occurs for residential is the multifamily?
That would be, it would be multifamily. Where if you have a single-family house, you could fix your driveway, but if you're in a apartment complex, you can't fix the parking lot.
So the council will come after individual family homes?
I wouldn't say the council will come after. We'll declare it a nuisance and the city will uh correct the issue. Um, but yeah, so very much working on that. Um, that'll be explained more uh on the, on the way we can do that next uh month. Yeah, still, there's a couple of ways to skin the cat, but we're, you know, kind of looking through all options right now and um, by next month, we'll have something that's finite. Um, but yeah, it's basically if you, I'll just throw out an apartment complex, test and apartments, most people are familiar. So yeah, if, if there was a nuisance, you know, parking facility, we thought we could come in and, and fix it.
Yeah, I like the idea. I'm just wondering about our reach, you know, because that is commercial, private, you know? Um, you know, with hopes, of course, with rentals, you know, depending on the, the price of rental may depend on how much money they're actually can put into maintenance, you know, that kind of thing. Um, I would say that anybody, commercial, uh, you know, that's commercial building like myself, I've got potholes and I'm not expecting people to be driving into my business, you know, and I would hope that would make sense to keep that in repair. Um, and just, we just get a little concerned that maybe
Overreach?
Yeah, you know, it's like, uh, no, we're gonna make sure you fix this, you know?
Yeah.
So I, I don't know. That's just my.
And we have a similar situation with uh stormwater ponds. So if you have a development of X amount of homes, you have to have a stormwater retention pond that's so big and it has to be maintained. And um, we have a performance assurance device, which is in the covenant um, that the HOA will pay for the maintenance of that stormwater pond. And if they don't maintain it, then uh the city will come in and, or will hire it out to maintain that stormwater facility at the expense of the HOA, uh, or if a HOA disbands at the expense of that, of the homeowners. So we do have that already, um, and kind of, you know, possibly looking at something similar to that.
I know, because I have to maintain mine.
Perhaps a more precise or definitive, uh, precise definition of what you mean by uh that parking. Does it exclude uh duplexes? Uh, does it include, you know, so many units of a, of an apartment complex or what? Because it, it could be like John was saying, you could, we may be kind of overextending ourselves a little bit here. And I realize that you're gonna have the counselors check this out, the lawyers check this out. But I, I would think a more precise definition might help, you know, calm us down a bit about, about how, how far reaching this might be.
Absolutely. And that's, that's why we're consulting with our attorney and finding out what, what we can and cannot do. Yeah, it's a, it's a valid point because, you know, you don't want, you don't want that overreach, but at the same time, you want our citizens and everyone to be able to, um, you know, maneuver through the city safely and without fear that they're gonna rip their bumper off, you know, in a parking lot. And uh, we have a similar, um, I might put you on the spot, Chris, for a second. We have something similar with uh chapter eight, and that's public, that's health and safety. So we can deem a structure a nuisance if it's deemed to be unsafe. Um, because health and safety are, are our priorities. Anything to add to that, but?
I absolutely agree, yeah.
Kind of going through the process of declaring a nuisance. It's, it's a long process. Uh, it's not something that we ever want to do. Um, but it's kind of in our back pocket if there's, you know, no, no compliance. And that's always our goal is compliance.
Yes, with that being said, I mean, we're talking a little bit about private property on, you know, commercial, ride-aid, Safeway, but the general public are the ones that are accessing it. So if there is a danger, that is a nuisance, that is a public safety concern. Large potholes that are causing vehicles damage, you know? There's a lot to be said there. So there's, we do have a little bit more teeth, but we are going through our legal to make sure we're pursuing it in the right way.
You know, you have a, it's not a bad avenue to attach to safety. You know, you have a, it's not a bad avenue to attach to safety. You know, because not just tearing the bumper off, but I mean, I've got a bed back. And if I'm just walking along and I'm not cognizant of there being a hole there. And that just, I mean, wipe me out for a week, you know.
And I've worked with local business owners, you know, and I've sold it to them. As saying, you know, I get complaints from people that don't feel safe shopping in your plaza. Because the parking's not striped out, the crosswalks are not striped out. The fire lanes aren't there, I mean, they just, they don't feel safe there. So it would really benefit you and protect you from the dirty word liability. If you invest a little bit in your property, you're gonna see profits on the other end, so I mean, working with business owners, but also. Having a little bit of teeth when they just completely refuse to voluntarily comply.
Yeah, retract what I said before.
This is safe.
Yeah. You else, Andrew?
Uh just one, one more piece on that, so. In our development standards, um chapter eighteen point five four point oh seven zero. So it is in our code, off-street parking areas shall be designed to provide for safe and convenient circulation of pedestrians and vehicle traffic within the parking area. And between the parking area and adjacent streets, so the intent is there, uh we just don't have that that last bit of. Needing the maintenance and trying to figure out the best way to do that where it's fair and. Um you know, that's that's our goal is one, be fair and two, the health and safety. Um but that is, that kind of wraps it up on um the code changes, I'm happy to send this uh draft out. After this meeting and. Really welcome your comments early on, um as early as possible, uh because when we go to hearing. Um it'd be great to to know the questions or the the updates that you might have.
What's the scheduled date for the hearing?
It is third Monday in August, so that is.
So it's our meeting.
Yeah, next. It's our meeting, yeah, the nineteenth.
Any else, any questions, any further questions? Let's move on to return to item number nine. Public hearings, there are no public hearings, until next time. Very well, before we go into subcommittee reports, I would like to put forward a couple of things here, pet peeves of mine. Uh two, one is a left turn onto Tim's from five oh seven. People try to make that turn when there's a stoplight just ahead of them and traffic is backed up all the way past. What's the street here? And, yeah, and they try, you know, they try to cut in, of course, and they're backing traffic up here. Because people are making a left turn onto five oh seven, uh uh yeah, five oh seven going uh south. So is there something that we could do, some kind of restriction that we put there, something, no left turn onto. Tim's, because they should go down to this street here, take a turn there and then get into the parking lot at Tim's. And then try to cross over through the traffic in this.
Is it a double line there? So.
It doesn't matter.
Do it anyway.
I've got a guy that gave me the bird and everything else, because I didn't let him go, and he was in a big old giant truck.
He was gonna run over you.
Yeah, he was gonna, I wasn't gonna let it, I did.
But just to make sure I'm I'm seeing the right thing here, I'm gonna share my screen here.
It's in front of the bank there, there's a.
I know how to fix it.
Basically, what you do is. There's no left turn coming in, so you make a right turn in, coming from the Rainier side, and you make a right turn out toward the light. And you put one of those little diamonds in there and you put the signage on it. So anybody that comes in with a right turn, they can still get into Tim's from that side. But anybody that comes through the alley or parks or or wants to go out that way, the only way they can go is to the right. But then you also put that diamond in there, so you got the same thing on the other side of the road at the bank. Because you got people coming through that drive-through that stop and then they wanna scoop tail right there and get into that left turn lane. And try to catch the light, and that screws stuff up there too. So, I mean, it's not just Tim's, it's both sides of the road right there. But if you restrict the the flow. With the, like, one of those diamonds, I don't know the exact terminology, but around by the liquor store, right there, Kurtson. You got one right there.
Yeah, like a median.
Yeah, I, some kind of a median is what I was thinking in terms of.
You were talking about this one right here.
Uh let's see, no, no. See with the back of that truck, here's the white truck.
Right there, right there.
Right there, they're coming in, they're trying to see him like.
That they shouldn't turn.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Welcome to the party.
Here to the street, down in there, and then now, the way Tim's got the parking set up, it's really easy, nice and. No problem, you know, but right there, it's just they're trying to get in there. And then and the the people over here on uh on five oh seven going down to five ten and wanting to make a left turn. Get blocked up because they can't turn, because the guy's sitting there waiting to turn left into Tim's, you know. And then the traffic backs up there, so anyway.
So that would, that would take some coordination with laws, I I don't have a good answer today, but I I can take this back and um follow up at the next meeting.
Oh, thank you.
Address that comment, yeah.
That's state, right?
That would be a good start.
That would be state, yeah, that's Washington State Department of Transportation.
Yeah, it's like.
So I could tell you.
No, we're not got picture down yet, leave that picture up there, go ahead.
Well, bef- before this president administration came on board, this has been a problem for years back.
Yes.
Okay, even back in the day, and you guys probably didn't remember uh Chief Chief Dunham. But we had a lot of issues right there, and they even went to the point where they put the rubber cones and glued them right there. Sticking up two, three feet or whatever they are, to tell people, please don't turn here. Okay, they were up less than a month and half of them were destroyed, because people drove right over the top of them. So, yeah, something more of a fixture.
Okay, then the other pet peeve number two, I keep bringing this up, I'm gonna bring it up until I hear something. Right here, at this intersection right here, people back up all the way from First Avenue all the way through that intersection to turn left turn. Because they want to turn onto five oh seven, but they they can't, because the the turn lane is not long enough for the traffic that's trying to turn left. So it goes all the way back, but yes, past the intersection, backs up to over here to where the the jewelry shop is. And then.
So you're on Yelm Avenue, you're.
You're on Yelm Avenue and you're wanting to turn on the first left.
When you go past, past Tim's.
Well, you can't, because the the traffic is backed up past the intersection here.
Yeah, it'll go down the.
And and then there's cars stacked up here, and so a person that doesn't know or isn't aware. He's on the other lane, wanting to turn there, so he goes past that intersection. Going to go turn left, and guess what, this guy is sitting at this intersection, no, he wants to go that way too. So he goes forward and you're trying to cut in and you can't, because this guy's. So what, that's not right either, I think that eventually there's gonna be some accidents there. Uh it's not happening, but it's getting worse and worse and worse, traffic is just backing up all the way back up to the jewelry store. Because they're trying to, there's not a a a long enough le- left turn lane onto First Avenue.
Now, how much of this is due to us not having the loop finished, yeah?
I don't think it has anything to do with the loop finished yet, because it's traffic going.
Traffic going this way.
Going that way, not coming this way, or going, I I don't think so.
Yeah, well, the the loop that's finally getting built.
Yeah, that won't do that, but remember we had.
We had another one designed.
One other thing that maybe would help a little bit is if. Those people that turn, that are wise and do turn left there on Second, I guess, Second Avenue. And go down to Mossman over here and catch the light over here, because they're going towards Rainier. Except that that light there is a bugaboo, I mean, you sit there and you wait ten minutes, it's not exaggerating. But you sit there and wait, there's no traffic coming, so it's not uh adjustable, adjusted for traffic. It's timing, I guess, it's a timed light, I don't know, but it's appears to be. So you sit there and you wait and you wait and you wait and you wait and fine, you get to turn onto Rainier. But that would eliminate some of the frustration that some of these people give, because you don't go that way.
One of the things that. At least the how I avoid this situation, so because I don't want to have my new car run into. Is I turn on Third. I turn way back at what used to be the old post office and the.
And then, but then how do you catch, how do you get onto five oh seven?
You go all the way down to the park and turn right on Mossman, yeah.
But you're not experienced delays at the Mossman light?
Well, yeah, it's forever, but it's that's a different problem.
See, that's what I'm saying, alright.
So, yeah, I don't have a good answer for you, Carl. Say again, next one.
I don't know, but some other solution to that, to that issue right there.
If you couldn't turn left onto. Second. If that wasn't allowed, then that turn lane that's there. On Yelm Avenue would be the turn lane for everybody that's going over to Rainier.
That's correct, that's for, I'll tell you what I did the other day. I I did something similar to what you did, but I went past to to the old Chamber of Commerce, to the old City Council.
The old City Hall.
Yeah, the old City Hall. And turned left there when they're on there and then came up Mossman this way, and of course, now I can make a right turn and have to wait.
You don't have to wait for the light.
I have to wait for the light, and I could, but that's what I did, I mean, but you know, that's. Anyway, those are the two pet peeves and that's that, anyone else?
Just, just, just uh throw a little monkey wrench at your deal, I understand totally what you're talking about. But one of the only ways that you can correct that is how you paint the lines to direct that traffic. But you also gotta think about, not only the person who wants to make a left at the light and continue on five oh seven towards Rainier. You got people coming from off of five ten that's coming through the other way. That may want to make a left turn to go to the coffee shop or the bowling alley or down to the school parking lot, so. That that is a tough spot to be in, but how do you resolve it?
Yes.
That's, that's the thing, how do you resolve it, because you gotta have it coming and going.
Yeah, yeah, well, again, I think uh uh an issue would be uh to make some adjustments of that Mossman light. That might be something to look at, see if it could be more uh uh adjustable or. Sensitive to traffic flow as opposed to limited by timing. Alright.
Yeah, and I'll uh I'll do a little bit of research for you and um report back. Next, Mike.
Thank you, very well, moving on to uh agenda item number ten, subcommittee reports, and.
Okay, there is a lot happening in the in the Parks Arena, that is not, we don't have an arena, but in that general area of Parks. Uh and that is uh the second, this next phase of the Prairie Line Trail is moving forward. Uh there's some preliminary design work going on to be able to determine the the cost estimates. For the next phase, next phase takes from the where the Prairie Line Trail ends just before Missoula uh River. And then it's gonna go across the river on the old trestle. And end again as soon as it touches land on the Pierce County side. That's the next phase, just to get across. And to explain what's been uh proposed for the design is that there's what's called a um. An apartment, a, an area where people can see the river, that they can get off the trail and they can actually look out and have some. Placards that say what what are they looking at on the.
Kind of like cul-de-sac thing.
Yeah, a little, little, uh there's a word for it, but it's a, it's. It just scoots out a little ways and it's and it's sturdy, so you can stand on it, it's it's, you're not having to. Yeah, right at the edge and stuff, uh to be able to see uh down river and up river. And there'll be one on each side of the uh when the the new development of the trestle. Uh and there's going to be a safety fence. They're looking at um, I think it's a five-foot fence at this point. Uh it's common knowledge that every high schooler and junior high schooler in the area has jumped off that bridge. But I don't know if you have to, you don't have to admit. But there's, um but we need to be able to have it uh safe, so. Uh they want people to be able to see the river, but not jump off. So that's underway and um. Howdy was saying that he, his target, he'd like to have it done by this time next year. We don't know that that's gonna be the case, it might be at the end of the the year, but uh that's, the focus is to get that part done. Uh and then there's a third part which goes all the way to Roy. And uh and they're still coordinating with Pierce County on that.
Are we half and half, I mean, I I never really looked at the uh delineated line on um the Squally River. I mean, is it half Thurston, half Beers?
As far as I know, when they, when you look at the signs and it says where does Pierce County start.
Yeah.
It starts on the other side.
Yes.
And so.
Yeah, but where would you put, would you put it on the bridge?
Who do we call if something happens on the bridge? And uh there's recently been an agreement signed, as far as I know, with um Yelm. Uh and Thurston County and the surrounding counties in what's called the Homeland Security District. Uh to provide coordinating uh support. So if you call, if you're out in the middle of the bridge. And you say, I'm in the middle of the bridge over the Missoula, and you're calling Thurston County.
Call Yelm.
And they will, they'll probably call Yelm, they'll do that. So it's, we were debating on whether to notice, put notices on the bridge, says, this is at the point where you start calling Thurston County. But no, you basically call whichever um office you're, you've got a phone. Hook up to, and uh there's this coordinating agreement across. There's also a uh some proposals. Being looked at by the council that are for a recreational facility. And um I don't know all the details. But uh there's, it's in discussion at this point. To, not on the trail, this is a separate one, like a a larger recreation facility for the town, the city of Yelm. So. As far as I know, it's just in the early stages of trying to understand what it could cost, how would they do, go about this bond to be able to do this. This building, and is it worth doing that versus other ways you go about having the same type of.
What is meant by recreational building, what is that?
Recreational facility.
Yeah.
Uh it's a facility where you can have uh team sports and um and group activities. Uh summer camps, um.
So is it a building as well as a?
Building as well as a field and.
Would be like a YMCA kind of?
Like a YMCA kind of thing, um and as far as I know. The best I heard was this, what was discussed at council, so it's. If there's anything else you've heard, Drew, about this.
Uh that's a little bit out of our scope, yeah.
I do believe there's gonna be, in the near future, there's gonna be more visibility of what's going on there. And whether or not it's um feasible. Is um is open right now, because the school bond failed. And they'd be going to a smaller, if you go just to the city. That's a smaller group of taxpayers uh to fund something that's a bigger thing, so. I don't, I don't know exactly how it's gonna. Gonna go about right now, but that's in discussion. And we've had Prairie Days, but we've also got the barbecue festival coming up. And that's the twenty seventh, twenty ninth, I don't have the date, the the end of the month. Uh of July, and then the second and. Uh, of July, and then the second and third of August is, uh, the Jazz Festival. And the park.
Yeah, I've heard the, um, the barbecue, uh, I mean, it's bringing in some big, big names. You know, I was like, I was talking to Steel and I'm like. These are the guys that are on TV, you know, I mean. These are real barbecue guys, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're on the map.
Yeah.
So. So anyway, that's, there's a lot happening in the next few weeks.
Very well.
Watch the park.
Watch the park, certainly a lot of activity, just without that kind of activity, people just enjoy the heck out of it. John, you have anything?
Um, no, no, tree board will resume meetings in September. Store commission will resume meetings in September as well. We'll start working on what Arbor Day will look like for next year. Hopefully, if weather's on our side, we can do Arbor Day outside. Last year, unfortunately, it wasn't, but we still made the best of it.
Yeah, but that's the nice thing about having the, um, the building. No, it really, it worked out.
It's funny, cause Arbor Day started outside and everybody wanted a building, now that we have a building, everybody wants to be outside.
They believe me, the first Arbor Day we had, bored. Was terrible, we had a couple of tents, but it's like.
Oh, anyone else have anything else to report, any committees? I, um, request a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion. Let me adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Not her, he needs adjourned.